Thank you for coming to tonight's council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. The United States of America, in due regard, with which we stand, one nation under God, and in this little liberty that I shall rule.
Would our city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Councillor Dillabough.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Kennedy.
Here.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Reisch.
Here.
Councillor Scampereley.
Here.
Quorum present.
We have no presentations tonight. Tonight, we have a public hearing regarding an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into the necessary agreements to lease approximately 1,190 square feet of office space located at 334th Street in the basement for a satellite office for Senator Patty Ritchie. It's going to be bill number six. I will open that public hearing up now. If anyone would like to speak regarding the public hearing, please come down to the microphone. You have five minutes to speak. I declare this public hearing closed, and I get to tap the gavel.
You do, carefully.
First time. I know, it was recently broken, but now it's fixed. Personal experience, appearance. If anyone would like to address the council, please come down and to the microphone, and you have five minutes. I did. That's what's so sad.
Dan, you might as well not whisper. We can all hear you.
Do we have any correspondence?
We have none.
Next, we have our consent agenda. That is the claims enumerated in General Fund Warrant Number 01-2020 in the amount of And Library Warrant Number 01-2020 in the amount of $45,860.21. And Capital Fund Warrant Number 01-2020 in the amount of $25,146.75. And Community Development Fund Warrant Number 01-2020 in the amount of $22,185,16. And Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 01-2020 in the amount of $32,999.20, as audited, be and the same hereby ordered paid. I so move.
Second.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councillor Dillabough.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley.
Yes.
Approved.
And that brings us to appointments. I make a motion to appoint Councillor Dillabough, Councillor Fisher, and Councillor Reisch to one-year terms on the Executive Compensation Board, terms to begin January 13th, 2020, and then December 31st, 2020. I so move.
Second.
Would the city clerk call the roll?
Councillor Dillabough.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Approved.
I make a motion to appoint Councillor Fisher to fill the balance of the unexpired term of Sean Shaver on the Audit Committee, term to begin January 13th, 2020, and then December 31st, 2020. I so move.
Second.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councillor Dillabough.
Yes.
Approved.
I make a motion to appoint Councillor Reisch to fill the unexpired term of Jennifer Stevenson on the Audit Committee, term to begin January 13th, 2020, and end December 31st, 2020. I so move.
Second.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councillor Dillabough.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to items for council action. The first item of business will be, the first item of business will be read by City Manager Sarah Purdy.
Thank you. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into the necessary agreements to lease approximately 1,190 square feet of office space located at 334th Street basement for the satellite office of Senator Patricia Ritchie. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Augdensburg, New York, as follows. Item one, an ordinance to authorize a lease of municipal property at 334th Street basement for the satellite office of Senator Patricia Ritchie. Item two, the city manager has presented the attached proposed agreement to lease space at 334th Street. The lease term shall be from January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2020, with an option to renew unless either party provides prior written notice to the other of its intention not to renew. Item three, the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached lease agreement hereby made part of this ordinance. Item four, passage of this ordinance shall be by a vote of three-fourths of all members of the City Council. Item five, this ordinance shall become effective after public notice has been published at least once each week for three weeks in the official city newspaper.
I so move. Second.
Is, um, question, Sarah, is the, um, rent, is that the same as it has been in previous years?
It did go up in 29, it for, it's going up in 2018.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
It's pretty nice having a senator right here in City Hall. She's done a lot for us, and having her right here at her disposal for her staff is, is a nice thing here in the county.
It's only fitting, you know, the city and county. No, it's, uh, and it is a luxury to have a statewide elected official here in the city in an office.
Any further discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councillor Dillabough.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Approved.
Mayor, can I call a point of order right now? The last council meeting, I knew that we voted to have department heads and whatnot read these resolutions, but I also pointed out that that is part of administrative regulations. And so I got to thinking about that today, and I basically have a question. I'm pretty certain that any change like that would require an actual resolution to change that along with a public hearing, and then we would vote on it at the same night as a public hearing. Is that, is that correct, Sarah, or do we know?
Well, the resolution that you adopted did have in the last paragraph that the city manager may take those actions.
Okay. And the charter also states that the city manager can move, basically talk anytime during the meeting anyways, but.
Right. But the charter also indicates that the City Council shall determine its own rules and order of business.
And that was in the Charter section. What I was citing in particular was administrative regulations.
Right.
AR 17, I believe, and I think it was Section B 2.13. I remember the 2.13, I don't like that 13 number, but anyways, if I'm not mistaken, that would have been the business of council. And all business on the agenda is business, I think it read something like that, to be addressed by council. And so, can we get a legal opinion at least maybe by the next meeting as to whether or not that probably, does that need a specific resolution changing that administrative regulation?
We could get that legal opinion if that is the consensus of the council.
Okay. Well, I would hate to do business not doing business properly, so, and that's, that's the only reason I'd write it up, because we do need to make that.
I don't think it specifies that, and the council can make its, you know, set its own procedures. We have to introduce a meeting, which is what we're doing, so, yeah, and we already voted on that. I mean, if you want Andy to look into it, we need to make an official change, that's fine.
I, I think he should. Anybody else?
Yeah.
I'm kind of looking into that, and what's the harm in vetting our cross community with this, or?
Under the Charter, under Section C 16, subsection B, regarding rules, and it falls under Meetings, Rules, and Minutes. Rules and Minutes, the City Council shall determine its own rules and order of business, and the minutes of its proceeding shall be of public record. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and maybe Andy, I don't know if he's here, can help me with that, but I believe that only applies through Robert's Rules of Order regarding the agenda. If you were to go off the agenda and move a certain item in place of, so, for example, if we were to, to jump from personal appearance to correspondence, we would need consensus of the council to move that, and that falls strictly under Meetings, Rules, and Minutes. And I just like some clarity on that as well. All my understanding, as far as open meetings and Robert's Rules of Order, that falls strictly under Meetings, Rules, and Minutes, and that would, that would require a consensus of council to, to move an agenda item or to skip an agenda item and skip to the next item on the agenda with consensus of council. If not, then you stick to the agenda. I, I believe the only, and that's the rule-making aspect of the agenda. And the Charter very clearly states that the agenda is the operating document of the City Council meetings.
I think you're right, Mike, because we've done that before, where we've stopped to have a, an executive session that was listed later in order to save time and save money instead of.
Right, to be able to move into, into session.
Just a simple consensus of council. So that's probably what is meant by what Councillor Reisch cited, as council shall set its own order of business. But anyways, yeah, if, was anybody else wanting an opinion on this?
I'm, I, I think that.
I don't, I'm good.
Good.
I would support a second opinion, but.
Just the opinion of our attorney, I mean. To see if we, if we're gonna make the change, we should make it legitimate, you know, and that way we're doing it, we know that we're doing this correctly.
So, we will check in with the lawyer.
Yep.
Thank you. For tonight, I guess we keep going.
You go ahead.
Yeah. And if Sarah wanted to introduce some things or whatever, then that's, I know that the Charter also says that the city manager can partake at any time she just can't vote, so.
Our next item of business will also be read by City Manager Sarah Purdy, please.
Resolution opposing any change in the county's sales tax apportionment to local municipalities. Whereas in 1965, New York State enabled counties to collect sales tax because Medicaid expenses became a shared expense between the counties and the state. And whereas in 1965, the St. Lawrence County Board of Supervisors decided to share 50% of the realized sales tax revenue with local governments, including the city of Augdensburg. And whereas in 2012, when an additional 1% sales tax was added, the board agreed to share the additional 1% with local governments, including the city of Augdensburg. And whereas, due to the ten-year agreement for the sharing of this revenue being up for renegotiation between St. Lawrence County and the city of Augdensburg, a county committee has been appointed to study and renegotiate the existing sales tax revenue distribution formula within the city of Augdensburg. And whereas the position of the county needing more funding to meet Medicaid costs in addition to the need to renegotiate the sales tax agreement with the city of Augdensburg may result in the county benefiting from additional sales tax revenue and the local governments, including the city, receiving decreased revenue. And whereas the St. Lawrence County Association of Town Supervisors and the St. Lawrence County Association of Mayors, on behalf of all towns and all villages in the county, have issued a joint resolution opposing any change in the county's sales tax apportionment to local municipalities. Now therefore be it resolved, this Augdensburg City Council hereby declares its opposition to any change in the county's sales tax apportionment to local municipalities, due to the devastating impact an apportionment change would have on local municipal budgets, resulting in significant local tax increases and possible personnel layoffs. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be given to the St. Lawrence County Legislature, the St. Lawrence County Association of Mayors, the St. Lawrence County Association of Town Supervisors, State Senator Patricia Ritchie, State Senator Elizabeth Little, State Senator Joseph Griffo, State Assemblyman Mark Walzak, and State Assemblyman Billy Jones.
Thank you. Does any member of council wish to make a motion to introduce this item?
To move it? Yes.
Yeah, I will.
I'll second it. Who introduced it, Mike?
Yes. Is there any discussion?
I, I've got a question, a couple questions, I usually do, but, so, I'm not, I don't understand the process. So, I thought Augdensburg had to agree, first of all, to the change, and I'm finding out that, no, we don't, they can just do it. And then, and correct me if I'm mistaken, but then I noticed on the end of our resolution, now it's my understanding that all the towns and the villages are passing pretty much the same resolution, because they don't want to lose any money either.
Right.
And I would suspect that St. Lawrence County is probably trying to pit some of the towns and the villages against Augdensburg and things like that, of course, a little shyster being played by these politicians, you know? But, right at the end of this resolution, I noticed that we're sending this to Patricia Ritchie, or Senator Patricia Ritchie, excuse me, Senator Little, Senator Joe Griffo, Assemblyman Mark Walzak, and Assemblyman Billy Jones. Does this sales tax redistribution have to be approved by the state legislatures?
No, but the extender of the additional 1% is up.
Okay.
It's a different subject, but it's related.
Gotcha. So I was just wondering why we're sending it to these folks.
Yep.
Okay. All right. And I would like to make sure that my little comment about the, you know, pitting the city against, is on record, because I want to make sure that the county gets a chance to read that.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little upset with the county right now, so, thank you.
Where are we here?
There have been a couple of negotiating sessions. It was my understanding that there was going to be a Finance Committee meeting of the county legislature earlier this evening, where this was going to be discussed, and I now understand that that meeting, that the topic was pulled. But I had wanted to wait until after that Finance Committee meeting, plus this council meeting, and then reach out to the county asking for the date of the next negotiating session. And certainly, as long as we don't have a quorum, councilors and the mayor are welcome to attend.
It's very unnecessary, county's in good, good financial status, very unnecessary to even consider taking this money from Augdensburg and other towns. And they're not gonna get it. We're gonna fight this hard, it's gonna happen.
The, the recent state of the state with the governor last week, he spoke of the, well, he didn't really go into detail about the deficit, patted himself on the back quite a bit. With that being said, I understand that the Medicaid deficiencies is going to be sucked up by local governments. I'm assuming he meant primarily southern part of the state, but I'm sure that this doesn't, my question, I guess, to you is how does this apply to the city of Augdensburg and/or the county?
Well, the way it would apply is, is if, in fact, that becomes true, all counties will be assigned a larger share of the Medicaid costs, and it will be done on the basis of the percentage that they, that they, that they shoulder now. So, for each county, it's the total percentage of your Medicaid costs that the county has to pay versus what the state has to pay. So, it is of concern to the county, because it is certainly an additional state mandate expense shoveled to their level, but I, I don't quite follow the logic that Augdensburg should be picked on because of that.
You know, recognizing that there was a deficit and, and, you know, they've been kicking this Medicaid can down the road, the state of New York, and the executive and the state legislature for the last three or four years, and now, now we're left to pick up pieces. And, you know, that's, that's big government operating at its, at its best. But with that being said, obviously, you know, this, these negotiations are vital to the city of Augdensburg, recognizing the financial position that we're in, and attempting to dig out of slowly but surely. But, you know, all that aside, you know, there's, there's gonna be a lot of moving parts here, and I strongly support this resolution at this time, until they recognize the value of the city of Augdensburg and the largest county in, in the state of New York.
We are the place in the county that really takes the lease services, no services, virtually. And, you know, we don't have county roads, we don't have county bridges, and, maintain.
But we do.
We got a county bridge?
Oh, we got a state bridge, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, not, not a county bridge. And the county wants our money, and yet, you know, when we're, when properties are dropped in our lap, and we end up with them like a cheese plant, how many years have we paid, how many years have we made the county whole?
Right.
With that cheese plant? And we make up, and we make our school district whole. But in the villages and towns, the county has to make those school taxes up.
That's right.
I mean, they've got a, a good gig. Do, you see sheriff's patrol on our streets?
No.
No, it's, it's our own police force. Dispatchers, we pay 911, we pay it over there in Canton, but we don't take it, we've had our own. They've had a good gig, we give them a lot of property taxes, we give them our sales tax. This is ridiculous that they, they even consider taking this from us.
First, we have to wait for the governor's budget, come out, see what he proposes in terms of what he's gonna do on the sales tax and Medicaid and all that, and the county has to actually submit a plan to re, to take the sales tax away from him. I know there's been a lot of talk about it, and it doesn't hurt to get out front of it, so.
If I could just add one more observation, I, I think it's very unfair to the new mayor and the new councilors who ran on a platform that included cutting taxes, to have the county turn around and say, well, here you go, we're gonna cut your revenue.
About two main points.
Yeah. It's like, you can't possibly succeed if, if the county does that, and I don't think that's fair.
You know, when we're working to get ourselves financially sound.
Yeah.
And turn ourselves around for the next decade, and then to have them gonna take large sums of our sales tax revenue in the next decade is, thank you, Sarah, that is a good point. Any further discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Councillor Scampereley.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councillor Dillabough.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by City Manager Sarah Purdy, and thank you for all the.
I brought a bottle of water with me. Okay, this is a resolution of the City Council introducing an ordinance and providing for public notice and public hearing. Be it resolved that ordinance number blank in their left blank on purpose, because you don't assign the ordinance number till later, so, anyways. Ordinance number blank of 2020 entitled an ordinance to authorize a license of municipal property known as the Maple City Trail, be and it hereby is introduced before the City Council of the City of Augdensburg, New York, and be it further resolved that the City Council shall hold a public hearing in the matter of the adoption of the aforementioned ordinance to be held at the council chambers in the city of Augdensburg, New York, on the 27th day of January 2020 at 7:00 PM. And be it further resolved that the city clerk give notice of such public hearing by publication in the newspaper at least seven days before the hearing date of a notice setting forth the time and place and describing the proposed ordinance in summary form, and be it further resolved that the city clerk provide written notice of this public hearing to all property owners located within 300 feet of said municipal property. And this is for a license agreement to allow access to property that's actually in Oswagachi. It'll be a very small section of the Maple City Trail that would be used to access that property for the purpose of constructing a.
Does any member of the council wish to make a motion to introduce this item?
I will.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Sarah, they've agreed that any damage, possible damage to the Maple City Trail, anything that is on them, that it would not come back on the city in any way, shape, or form, it would be.
Correct.
Restored to as good or like you.
Yes, that's what they've agreed on.
And as for our Maple City Trail, we've got a lot of work to do on it, and we don't need to do any more damage to it.
Any further discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councillor Scampereley.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councillor Dillabough.
Yes.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Yes.
Councillor Reisch.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Clerk Timothy Johnson.
This resolution provides for public notice and public hearing with regard to amendment to the administrative regulations. Be it resolved that proposed ordinance number blank of the year 2020 entitled Amendment to the Administrative Regulations of the City of Augdensburg be and it hereby is introduced before the City Council of the City of Augdensburg, New York, and be it further resolved that the City Council hold a public hearing on said proposed ordinance at the City Council chambers at 7:00 PM on Monday, January 27th, 2020, and be it further resolved that the city clerk publish or cause to be published the public notice in the official newspaper of the city of Augdensburg of said public hearing at least seven days prior, here to, there to. Ordinance number blank of, is that supposed to be 20?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, there's a correction.
Are these generally, like, read in full?
I didn't think so, but I'm not sure.
You don't, you don't have to read it in full, you can read it by summary statement, and then just.
You don't, you don't have to read it in full, you can read it by summary statement and then just explain.
Yeah, okay. Well, this is my first one, so.
That's all right.
Um, so, so you have to, uh, what do you want, what do you wanna know? It's a travel clause, reimbursement clause.
Just a change in, uh, allowance?
Is this housekeeping, or is this a change?
It's an annual revision of our, uh, meal reimbursement for travel and our mileage reimbursement for travel. We use the, uh, Consumer Price Index, uh, as a chart published by the, uh, Bureau of Labor Statistics of, uh, clerical wage earners, uh, I just, it's in the chart, how it's from October to October, I just calculate the percent difference applied to the breakfast, lunch, and dinner rates, and that's the percent increase, we can just kinda round it off a little bit. So, the allowance for the meals, if someone travels out of town, uh, there's a breakfast allowance of eleven dollars, a lunch allowance of twenty-two dollars, and a dinner allowance of forty-four, for maximum seventy-seven dollars per day. And the mileage goes by the IRS, uh, militerie, and it went down a half a cent from last year.
So, this is just a change because of the CPI increase?
Yes.
So, we'll.
There's resolutions for the public hearings.
Is there any further discussion? Deputy Mayor, would you offer to make sandwiches to save money for the city on trip, on trip?
Sure.
Okay. Can you enter that in there?
Can we get a legal appeal whether or not we're gonna have to change the revenue?
Any further discussion? Um, would the city clerk, uh, please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabough?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scampelli?
Yes.
Approved.
Um, our next item of business will also be read by City Manager Sarah Purdy.
A resolution to appoint a committee to commence work on the city of Augsburg's 2020 application for downtown redevelopment initiative funding. Whereas the city of Augsburg is in need of an injection of capital in its downtown for the health and prosperity of this community, and whereas the state of New York has an annual competition for ten million dollars in downtown redevelopment initiative funding to improve downtowns, and whereas the city of Augsburg is going to do everything in its powers to compete effectively for these funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to form an ad hoc committee of Augsburg citizens and Augsburg business owners who share this vision to redevelop the downtown, and be it further, further resolved that this committee shall be fully supported by the city administration with accomplishing this objective, and be it further resolved that said application shall be written and submitted by the city with input, support, and direction from this Augsburg Downtown Revitalization Initiative Committee in accordance with the procedures set out by the North Country Regional Economic Development Council.
Any discussion?
Yeah, um, are you, um, looking for input, as, um, that the mayor is offering? Are you looking for input from fellow counselors as well for committee? Who, who maybe have suggestions for committee members as well, or is this something that you?
No, it's all me. No, yes, of course, yes, I would, uh, yes, I.
Well, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, uh, um, you know, we'll, um, put a list of respective, uh, people for the committee and.
I sent a few ideas that I think may be beneficial to a committee that would like to do something like that.
Yeah.
Last time, if I'm not mistaken, uh, now the city al- also, I'm sorry, were you done?
I wasn't, but you like to ask a lot of questions, Dan, so if this is gonna take, I'm gonna let you jump in.
I don't, I don't wanna take up your floor space, I'm sorry.
No, I just, um, last year I thought that, you know, we did put together a really well-written, um, effort into it, and, um, I was at, when we had the information meetings, and we had a lot of community involvement, um, as far as what they'd like to see in our downtown. And, uh, during the course of that interaction, I know Andrea and Sarah Alletta and, um, the response we got from members of our community, they felt valued because they were involved and asked their opinion. And I would like to see something like that continue, um, or if, whether it's Andrea and Sarah did a great job last time doing that, or if, you know, this committee may choose to do something like that. I think keeping as many residents involved as to what their vision is will be beneficial.
What, what is the, well, what was the, uh, primarily you and Andrea? Anybody from the county or state helping out in, in this, in, in the previous draft or the previous, uh, application for the B R I?
Well, we had, uh, members of the planning board and city council also participated in, in the outreach and the discussion. So, um, you know, we're certainly willing to go however you want with this. I think the sooner we get started, the sooner we get started, the better.
My question is, is this, can we include the planning board? Along with this ad hoc committee of local businesses and, and members? And should we also have a member of city council or mayor, deputy mayor? One of us also preside on this council as well? Possibly chair or oversee it and, and.
I think the more people involved, there'd be, we'll limit the committee, but we will want involvement from everybody, everybody in the community.
Well, we, we did it last time with a public hearing as well, I believe you attended as well, so. And, and, and that's always good, and, you know, public input's always good, and, and I'm not opposed to a committee. But, you know, I mean, these are very highly competitive, uh, uh, processes and, and, you know, with the regional economical, kind of, economic council throughout the state, I mean, these are very competitive. And, uh, you know, I'm just curious to know whether or not we should have a member of council or members of the planning board involved as well.
Yeah, sure, everybody can get involved. Uh, you know, the idea is, I guess, to form a grassroots committee of people, businesses that have businesses downtown. Uh, yeah, ten, twenty people, whatever it may be, have staff work with them to get their input for their projects and then have staff, of course, write their application. So, just wanted to clarify.
John and I were in Clayton, uh, last year, and we met with some of the people, uh, and listened to the, there's Mayor Masui ago, there was, um, I can't remember her name, from Serenac Lake, uh, different people that were successful in getting the ten million dollar grant, it was very interesting. And, um, we just, uh, actually, uh, thought that it would be good to get, um, interest and citizens vowed early, and so we get the, earlier we get started, the earlier we can get it developed. But, uh, yeah, we don't want anyone excluded.
I think it'd be good to, to have the business community and also, um, the civic community. Um, and so, you know, I'll, I'll look to you for, uh, the structure of how this is gonna get started. Um, 'cause the sooner we get it out the door, the better.
And we'll get, uh, a list of people that are interested in it, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Sounds good, thanks.
Any further discussion?
Actually, uh, Nicole, the head is on the head, what I was gonna say, so. I didn't wanna limit public participation at all. She did a much better job than I would.
You're not trying to steward thunder.
Not at all, I wanna make sure.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Dillabough?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scampelli?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by City Manager Sarah.
A resolution to appoint an ad hoc committee to write an updated comprehensive plan for the city of Augsburg. Whereas it has been a few decades since the city last updated its comprehensive plan, and whereas the city council would like to update this comprehensive plan to one that will be a statement of the city's vision and goals and objectives for the future, and whereas this vision will encompass the entire community and such critical topics as business development, housing, infrastructure, healthy community goals, crime prevention, waterfront development, downtown development, parks and recreation, historic preservation, and such other topics that will lead to an improved community and improved quality of life for the residents of the city of Augsburg. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to appoint an ad hoc committee of local citizens to draft an updated comprehensive plan for the city of Augsburg, and be it further resolved that city administration shall assist and cooperate with the comprehensive plan committee in achieving this important goal, and be it further resolved that this comprehensive plan shall be created during 2020 and delivered to the planning board and city council for consideration and adoption.
So move.
Okay, discussion?
Yes. Um, I guess I'm gonna piggyback a little off of last week on this, with the hiring freeze that was voted on. I, I, I understand that, I, I believe, I support this in the fact that this is great to see a vision, but I'm struggling because we're talking about crime prevention, parks and recreation, things that our community needs, and we've just decided we're not gonna hire, we have a hiring freeze, so we're not gonna hire city rep help. I know we're saying we're gonna revisit it, but, um, same thing, we're gonna need a fire chief, now we're not replacing a fire chief. Uh, police officers aren't going to be placed. I just kind of find that, you know, it, it just doesn't really go in line with what you guys are doing with wanting to put a hiring freeze on, but we wanna improve on all these things. How do, how does not hiring anybody to fill the valued positions that we need in our community, and then we turn around the next week and we wanna develop our downtown, we wanna improve parks and recreation, we wanna do historic preservation, we wanna have cr- excuse me, crime prevention, but how are we gonna do this if we're not hiring the people to do the job?
Well, uh, as far as the hiring freeze, we were elected November fifth. We've had only outreach, I had outreach from one person, that was Dan. I had no outreach, nor have had any outreach from anyone on the council, nor the past mayor. Everything we asked for was declined, we did Freedom of Information Act, we got nothing. What do you expect when we come in on Jan- January first with no information?
I would think that since the actual, your term started January first, that, then, you know, then we should be able to come in as a group and work together, and I just don't see that at all.
Prior councils have brought the new council, new elected officials in, made them part between November fifth and January first to bring them up to date, so we get in January first with no knowledge, so we stop the clock, and we'll start the clock when we're ready.
I understand that, but when I came on council, I wasn't brought in early, but I'm not, I'm not here to dispute any of that. I'm just saying that I just wanted on record that how can we not hire positions that are desperately needed as far as a fire chief? We're talking public safety, and now we're gonna have a team of firefighters out there who are going to be missing a leader.
Uh, he may stay on.
But I'm, I'm.
He may stay on. We've had a fire chief, we've had, uh, a full police force, we've had every department filled, and where are we now? I mean, our city's in disrepair, so let's develop a plan from when we're ready with the hiring freeze.
I, like I said, I support doing the plan. I just, I just find it ironic that we're gonna try to improve things we're stopping, that's all.
Well.
We're gonna do this plan, it's not gonna take effect for at least two years. You're not gonna jump in and everything's gonna be good tomorrow. So, it's gonna take time.
I'm, I'm quite aware of that, I'm just.
So, we'll put the higher, the higher freezes there, we'll just keep it for now, and like I say, we'll, we'll hire people as we need.
I blame Dan, if he hadn't fallen off a tree, he wouldn't talk to me more.
Yeah, exactly.
Writing a comprehensive plan or a downtown revitalization initiative grant doesn't have anything to do with the discussion about, uh, resources and how those resources should be allocated and what we need are two totally separate things. The idea is to create a vision for a comprehensive plan.
And like, like I said, I, I agree with that portion of, I agree with doing the comprehensive plan. I just find it, the vision that we wanna have is just completely opposite of, of what we're doing.
I don't think so.
Can I, gentlemen?
There's no vision written yet, so.
Okay, so, have you, gentlemen, uh, and I understand where you're coming from, that, that you've been denied or something, have you had a chance to look at the L W R P? Because that was mentioned at the last meeting. Has everybody in here had a chance to get it and read it?
A comprehensive, a comprehensive plan means that it's comprehensive, it doesn't just include the waterfront, so.
That's right, and if you read the L W R P, you'll know that it's comprehensive. And, and it covers, uh, the entire city, and it covers so many different aspects. Actually, after the meeting, I, it's been probably a couple of years since, right, sorry, Andrea, but, I don't know where she is. But, uh, I went back and looked at it within the last week, and it's just so, it, it, there's a lot of detail, and it's, it's a living document that we can change. So, when I saw this on the agenda, I thought to myself, maybe we should start with that. Let's, let's table this resolution. Let's get everybody up to, up to speed on the L W R P, so that everybody can see. And, and an L W R P stands for Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan, right? Is that right, Andrea? And it covers every different aspect, not only of the, the demographics of the city and our history and the people and our incomes and everything, and then it talks about the need for a new zone that, in, in, in local laws that will conform to federal and state laws that the feds and the state want us to adopt so that we can then get grant money to re, to clean up our brownfields and things like that. And it, then it goes on to talk about, uh, where we wanna go with these different areas and districts in, in, in town, and how we wanna redevelop our own city. And so I think the lion's share of the work, probably ninety-five percent of it is, exists already. And I think if you guys get a chance to read this, and then maybe, uh, Andrea can, can give a small presentation or see if we have questions, and, and, and why don't we go from there? So, why don't we table this resolution? And, and then everybody get up to speed on what the L W R P is, and then have a, a conversation about what's the difference between the comprehensive plan? 'Cause I think you guys are talking about the exact same thing that she's already written.
Well, why don't we get, go ahead, get citizens involved? They can, we can all look at this with, uh, a new group of citizens, but I would really like to get, um, the people more, the people back involved with our city.
Right, and this is where this L W R P, there's a lot of citizen participation that design where the city wants to go. And as I said, it's a living document, so if you have a new group of people that wanna see various changes, we can make those changes, or add to it, or take away.
And we can use it, but still have former committee of new people.
To reexamine the L W R P, if that's what we want.
So, let's go ahead with this.
I say let's table this, and I'm gonna make a motion to table it, and tell everybody gets versed on that, and then we can take it off the table and continue the discussion.
I'm not in favor of tableing it, Dan, this is, this is moving forward, I wanna move forward, not backwards.
I don't think the L W R P is. I'll second Dan's motion, and, and if I can, I'd like to comment as well. As far as the budget and recognizing the, the new, less city council now, um, our budget is pretty much what it is. We've all been around, we've got city employees here, we've got businessmen here, we've got men, uh, the deputy mayor works in state bureaucracy, state government, and all its, all its happenings, and he understands it, he gets a full grasp of it. Our budget is what it is, it's bare bones, there's nothing to it. If you open it, there's no hidden line items in there with an exorbitant amount of money anywhere in it. Uh, we passed a budget to allow for the certain staffing, uh, issues, and to piggyback what Nicole said, if you look at some of the new criminal justice reforms that have come down since January, uh, some of the issues that, and we're not going to hire another police officer, uh, due to a hiring freeze. And I understand the concept, I, I, yeah, I do, and you wanna, you don't wanna jump in feet first, both feet first. You wanna get a good grasp on it, but as I said before, the budget is the budget, and, and it has no hidden, hidden nooks and crannies with any extra money in it anywhere. It pretty much is what it is. Uh, as far as the resources, again, the, the criminal justice reform packages that are out there right now are a hindrance to the public safety of this society. And the budget that we, that the previous council passed, again, which is a bare-bones budget, allowed for these items to be filled. And going forward, anything outside of what was passed last, uh, uh, in the last budget for this fiscal year. before this fiscal year, nothing has to happen with that. And we have some rates of attrition through the fire department, and I believe through the police department, if I'm correct. No, no, I'm not, no, I'm not correct with that, but through the fire department, there, there, there are, if somebody were to retire with the new hire, or the hiring of the police chief, or the fire chief, my, my apologies. But all that aside, I mean, it's, it's just vitally important, and I agree with the mayor and the deputy mayor, to build on what we have. The last couple of years, we dug ourselves away from that constitutional tax limit. Myself being somewhat new, coming in in March, I can, I, I attribute that to the previous council. But all that aside, we are building on what we have, and we need to continue building on what we have. I'm not opposed to the committee, but just to, to, to piggyback, I, I wonder, I don't want things getting lost in bureaucracy. Things like getting lost in the shuffle with too many, too many people in the, in the, for, these are highly competitive initiatives and, and the city, the city, we need to continue pushing forward. The parks and rec, and even the historic preservation, our library and our Remington, I have employees that, that are, that are somewhat, uh, employees of the city. And, and those are, those are my agenda concerns regarding that.
I respect your opinion, but the budget's not the budget. And we'll deal with the budget as we go on, as far as the first, uh, and the hiring freeze. And time will tell. It's not kicking the can down the road anymore.
I'm not suggesting we are kicking the can down the road.
Well, it's not done.
I see this city as a city that, that lives like a lot of households in, in, in much of America. They live paycheck to paycheck. We operate, you know, we're, we're, we're basing a lot off some speculations. The, the couple of the resolutions that passed last time. That's a lot of speculative stuff without considering the revenues that may or may not come in. So you have to take that into consideration, you have to take that into serious consideration.
I'm leaning on not coming in, and-
Revenues?
Some are not, probably not gonna come in. So the reality of it is, we can keep hiring everybody you want, and then when we can't pay for it, what are we supposed to do?
We appropriated the, the, the items for the budget. The previous budget. That's, I'm not saying we're gonna go start willy-nilly, start hiring people left and right, that's not what I said.
Well, we circ, we cycled back to the, uh, the hiring freeze on a, on a comprehensive plan that hadn't been updated since the eighties. And that was part of the reasoning for it, so I,
I'm not gonna do that.
I mean, it's froze. Call for a vote on the, on the table.
So the last comprehensive plan, if I remember right, was like a three-page document. And all it does is assist a vision for the community. I mean, it talks about, you know, ideal housing, it talks about, you know, keeping the crime rate down. It may have some objectives in it, it's really, really simple, it's not that complicated, it's not that root shaggering. And the idea is just to get people together, just to update it. I mean, it's only three, four pages, someone could find it here, I'm sure. And give people an opportunity to say their vision of what they want their community to be. And, um, send that to the council with Andrea's help, with Sarah's help. And, you know, adopt it, and it's a document that they can use to cite, uh, for grants that they write as justification for why they're writing and why they should be approved. It's, uh, it's really not that complicated.
And, and that's the whole purpose of the local waterfront revitalization, because this is, the feds and the states said, if you want grant money, basically, you gotta have this plan in order. So we created, I think, what it is you guys are seriously looking for. And I mean, I don't think tableing this till the next meeting, for you, give you guys a chance to, to see what this is. You know, I, I think to educate yourselves on this will, will help you. You know, help you understand things a little bit more. This is a hundred and eighty pages.
I worked here in the nineties for twelve years, and I know all about the local waterfront revitalization plan. And quite frankly, can you name any local waterfront revitalization? Since the eighties or nineties?
We got a new code system. I mean, what this is, is a plan to get grant money. Have you seen it?
I have.
You know, I, I mean, it, it gives you the demographics of the city, and the direction we wanna go, and the fact that we need a new code system to update our city and modernize our city. And that's one of the aspects of it, and that's right where we're at. It took, uh, took Andrea a long time to get public input to develop this. And then, on top of that, she's created a whole new code system for us, and I think this is, why go backwards and redo what's already been done without even taking a look at-
I mean, we're gonna approve that. Everything can be, and we take this and we improve it.
Cause you got a hundred and eighty pages of incredible amount of work.
I mean, does anyone think that the course Augsburg's been on for decades is working? Anybody say this course that Augsburg's been on for decades is working?
No.
So, we're just looking at-
That was also councils before we are previously elected, so we are all fairly new in the realm of city politics. I have two years under my belt, I've learned as I go along, the same way everybody else is gonna learn. I agree, we need to improve. But I'm just saying, under items for discussion, I'm going to request a work session, cause I think the seven of us who exist here, we need to get together where we can all sit down, and public is more than welcome at a work session, and try to hammer some of these issues out, because we obviously all want the same general good for the city, but this is not solving the problems.
I've been on council for ten years. And during that ten years, uh, right at the beginning of this, we brought out the BOA, Brown, Brownfield Opportunity Areas. And Mike was on council with me. And we got that going, and we got time to clean up. Now that's an improvement. So when you look at decades, I don't, I don't think the city has been successful. When you look at the last ten years, I think that we're finally starting to get our wheels turning forward. And it's work like this that I don't wanna throw out the window until everybody on this council has had a chance to look at it. And I really think that's important. John knows it, like the back of his hand, that's fine. But if everybody else has not had a chance to read it, I think it's important.
They are two, they can actually complement each other. You know, if Andrea thinks it's important that, you know, the local waterfront revitalization plan, then you can actually cite that in a comprehensive plan. And that's why it's called a comprehensive plan, because it includes everything and not just the waterfront-related history.
What, what is missing? What is missing?
And then Diamond is, uh, while it's, uh, a success, it's a partial success.
Right.
You can't build single-family homes because the dirt is not, uh, clean enough to have a single-family home as a child, baby out there playing in the dirt. So you have to have multifamily. And that's, uh, a bit of land to fill with multifamily, so.
So there's a vision in here with, that talks about that.
You know, but there's other areas that were, uh, backfilled, put concrete over. So that has to be, uh, become a parking lot. We, there's, uh, the issue of getting water and sewer down there. I mean, it's a, it's a success, but it's, it's not enough.
Oh, I know.
And, and so, um, I mean, it, how are we gonna, how are we gonna develop that in that large parcel of land into all my, my multifamily? It's, you know, so I, I don't think-
So there's a vision in here by the public of what they wanna see Diamond turn into based on the options. And I, I don't think it's, it's too far-fetched. But I think without educating yourselves on what these visions are, and like I said, this is a working document. I think you're, this is your comprehensive plan, just take a look at it.
Let's let Andrea educate the people on the comprehensive plan committee, and let's move forward and could you call the question, I'll call the question, please, and the table, I guess it has a second, so let's get that out of the way.
Would, would the city clerk, please call it on?
Yes, and just to clarify, this is to table. This is a motion to table. Counselor Fisher?
No.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
No.
Counselor Scanforley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
No.
Counselor Dillabough?
No.
Denied.
Call the question on the resolution, please.
Counselor Kennedy?
No.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Scanforley?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabough?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
I'm, I'm all in favor of Mrs. Kennedy's, uh, meaning of the whole, I was gonna suggest the same thing, and, um, so whatever you'd like to do on that, that'd be great.
So from what I understand, in the discussion, this will be a joint effort between the LWRP program, this, this new ad hoc committee, correct?
Yes, we're gonna take, we got a starting point with this, and we'll have our committee and move forward, um.
Yeah, they would, so for clarity, just for myself, and I apologize for missing the last meeting, do the work. But with that being said, as far as the hiring freeze and, uh, some of the aspects of the resolution, and from what I understand through viewing the last week's special meeting, that the hiring policy will be reviewed as, as we go here, as we're moving along?
There'll be, uh, there'll be swimming, there'll be, uh, uh, help, summer help, and, yeah, the grass will be mowed. I, uh, very much in favor of mowed grass.
One more concern about the services we provide through our fire department and through our grant process through the fire department, and more importantly, the public safety as far as, uh, the recent reforms, the recent reforms that have hit the state and affect our communities.
Yeah, that's what I think, and came up. Is there any more discussion on old business? And that brings us to new business?
Wait, Sarah's got a old business.
I, I just need a little clarification, cause you said earlier, I'm sorry, when we were talking about the hiring freeze, you said earlier that, um, the retiring fire chief might come back?
I thought you were impressing him.
Um, well, it, that would be a great option, but the problem is he has to be gone for a day. So therefore, there's a hiring freeze and he can't come back. So, I mean, if we, if there's an opportunity to clarify that at all, that would be helpful. Maybe for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you know, we're talking about that, I guess, has there been anybody within the fire department that's requested to become a fire chief?
There, we do have a list of one, so, um, beyond that, I've been in discussions with the State Office of, uh, Fire Prevention Control and County Civil Service, and I'm waiting back for some responses from them on what we are and are not gonna be allowed to do. I don't want to, um, bring forward any information until I've got it in writing.
If that were the case, and we were to hire one, then we'd be taking one out of service, we'd be losing an item.
Well, there was, that is agreed, there, it, it, the, the manner in which a, a, a reduction of a position would take place is covered by the new collective bargaining agreement with the IAFF. They've already dropped one, and they will be dropping three more. It's the manner in which that takes place. And I'm not particularly interested in discussing that publicly
Understood.
tonight, but the language is in there for how that takes place to reduce the department by four total positions.
Does anyone else have new business to discuss?
Old?
Or still on old?
So much fun, you were ready to get to that.
I know, it's just, yes. Are we done? Any more discussion on old business? Any discussion on new business?
Yeah, on, uh, last weekend, when we had the possibility of getting an inch and a half to inch rain, or rain and, um, ice, there was a lot of questions as far as where people would go. And I know we have a, um, disaster awareness plan, but it hasn't been updated since 2017. And ten of the people on the, on the actual names and numbers aren't, uh, one was another council from before, and a lot of people were asking where they would go. And when I searched for this plan, it was hard to find because it was stuck in the site map on the website. The former mayor and town supervisor in Lisbon stepped up and said, told everybody right where the shelters were. And if we lost total power or a significant part, there's a lot of elderly who wouldn't have had, um, any connections or probably sat through the night worrying whether or not they were gonna lose power and heat, and what would happen to them. I know the school's the place to go. Doug Lawler stepped up and spoke out there. Deputy Mayor Riche was out on Facebook responding, cause people were messaging him. But we don't, we didn't have anybody that triggered even a possibility. And if we don't say something to the public prior to the event actually taking place, how are they gonna know where to go? And in this, uh, um, plan, it talks of, um, public awareness and, and how the public must be well-informed in order to respond. And that's one of your biggest public safety issues, is what do we do with these people? Who, once the bomb's gone off, we can't, we can't stop it. So I, I think somebody should have triggered something last weekend to at least give them somewhat of an idea or a direction that if it did go south, where we would go. And I, and I just, I think we missed the boat on this one.
Yeah, maybe you could update that, put in the right names, and then like a procedure for, uh, just notify people prior to any events coming up that, that we know about it, and maybe even mention social media and, and for our fire and police to know, um.
Yeah, I will talk to the county EMS about that.
Cause it, there was a, at least fifty to a hundred, um, electric company trucks rolled in between Walmart, Lowe's parking lot, um, Wadham's Hall, um, they were all staying up in Wadham's Hall. Um, they were, you know, staging and potstanding in different parts of the county, but we had a lot of them here. And, I mean, somebody hit the alarm to say, get ready, this is gonna happen, and all that manpower was sitting in Augsburg. And the people that live here, the elderly, really didn't have a clue if all of a sudden everything shut down.
Yeah, I learned something when I called the fire department, because, uh, they, they were well-prepared, and they do have cops and things that, uh, harbor, and I'm not sure if it's Old Bay or all the schools, but it's, uh, it's big enough.
Yeah, I will definitely talk to county EMS, who's in charge of this.
I didn't see, I, you know, it's, it's a good point, I didn't see anything come out of the county offices and/or, I, I think of simple reporting mechanisms that typically are on channel seven. You know, I mean, any, uh, any shelters or emergency preparedness that's necessary, uh, I don't even know who's, who's heading up the, uh, the county, uh, we, we should be. But, I mean, quite frankly, we're a bit responsible for it as well, but that being said, uh, you know, there should be-
We coordinate with them, and they're the ones who are, um-
Kid, uh, Kid Smith, uh, that's even me, and I talked to Sarah about it, since there's no longer, um, fuel distribution at public roads to, you know, to care of the police and the fire and the DPW. Sarah's gonna look into, like, we get our fuel at Sunoco, and we need to see if they have a generator, the power goes out, we can still get fuel for our equipment.
I believe that, uh, they do have some small tanks that are enough to take care of the fire.
Cause that, was that?
Switched.
Yep, yeah, discussion, and they do have reserves that they use specifically for police, fire, and
So just not enough?
Just not enough to probably do for an extended period of time, but if there was a dire emergency, we would still be able to have police and fire on the road.
Any other new business to discussion?
I have discussion if I'm moving on to that.
Okay, let's go to discussion.
So I have two items. I did also take notice, um, to piggyback off Counselor Fisher. For a while now, I've been pushing for some type of, I know Sarah's gonna hate me for this, app forwarding or something that we could push information out in form of an app that the city could have. In the Municipal Matters magazine a while back, we had, there was an article on it, there were other communities were doing it. And I've been asking or pushing, can we explore the opportunities to create an app for the city? I understand that we need to have documentation of everything that goes out. Um, I would, I would like to see, um, something developed so that way we could push information out in mass quantities to cell phones. Most everybody has a cellphone, some of the elderly don't, but we can obviously work with the news channels for that. But just a simple app to push out information, quick blurb, like some Twitter even, like, where we can push it out, so we can put out that information, like where, where a shelter is if needed, you know? So we can put out that information, like where, where a shelter is if needed, you know, um, rush pickup, plowing, when they're gonna cut back banks, you know, your city water is due, taxes are due, things like that. I know Sarah's been looking at it for a while, but.
Actually, I'm not the one who was looking at it, Cora was.
Oh, Cora, well, we don't have Cora anymore.
We don't have Cora anymore, so I think what, what I can do is circle back to you with what the options are, how much they cost and how much more of our IT consultant's time we'll have to buy.
Yeah, anything, and.
Yeah, I can do that.
Cause I understand there's an expense with it and I didn't know if, like I've mentioned before, maybe folks who would be interested if developing something for us to like maybe try, I don't know if they're even capable of doing that, but just maybe utilize something like that. I just think that, you know, being close, close, um, proximity to them, maybe it's something we could work on, even just to, even try it as a small base or something, people could sign up for it if they were interested. Maybe try it with a hundred people to start and build upon that, but most everybody has a cellphone. Even my grandfather had a cellphone before he passed away and he was eighty-five, so, I mean, there's hope for everyone. Just think it'd be quick and easy and, uh, public record wouldn't be an issue because we could keep track. There wouldn't be a form of communication back and forth on it, just information would only go out.
Good idea.
Even information like that we're, you know, maintaining events in the city, pushing note out, public swimming on Sunday. Um, I know my kids love to do that at the city, or at the pool at OFA, anything like that that we can push out. Toddler time on the Dubisky Center, I know we use Facebook and things like that. Yep.
Any, any other discussion?
Um, I would like to, um, look at our schedules and schedule a work session with all of us. Um, obviously, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of disagreements. Um, I think as far as LWRP comprehensive plan, I think before we can put a committee together, I think we should all sit down and get a list of things we would all like to see included in something like that. So that way we can have at least a working document to get together when we do get a group together of things we would all like to see, things that are existing, things that could be better than what is existing. Cause I think right now there is, um, seven people, or six people, sorry, seven, that think all different things. And I think if we could sit down without having to worry about, you know, there, we obviously can't do it because we have a legal meeting, but if we can have a work session, public is more than welcome to attend. It's more informal than a formal meeting, people can speak freely. And, um, like you said, you don't feel like you've got the warm and fuzzy welcoming. So if we can do that, we can all sit down in one large group and try to coordinate something, to come up with a common goal.
I like it.
Um, so if, I would like to propose that, you know, within this, maybe by Wednesday, everybody could maybe pick three dates and send them in and see, uh, email group emails, see if we can't pick a date. Could you help us with that Kathy? Maybe send out like one of those ticker things or, you still, a doodle poll, whatever it is.
Are you thinking a Saturday or a Sunday?
Um, I would prefer a weekday, preferably in the evening, just cause I have two small kids and it's hard for me to find daycare on the weekends.
I prefer an off Monday.
Yeah, like an off Monday, cause I know my Mondays I can usually make work. Um, I just know that, I think it's imperative that we can all get together.
And Mike's here on Monday generally?
It would just, um, that's why we sent out the doodle poll. Maybe we can, even if we have to schedule two weeks out or something, even if it's after the next council meeting, um, that would be fine, I just think getting everybody in one, uh, move together might be better.
Well, February third or tenth would be the next ones really that are available, I mean.
That, that, that's difficult for me, it is.
Why don't we just put out just a few dates and send it out and then see where it goes?
That doesn't do the.
Well, I guess, I guess.
Sit and go around all night long.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm back on Thursdays, usually I leave on Mondays for Albany, I'm back on Thursdays. Um, I don't know how familiar anybody is with the state legislature, but they moved the legislative session from April, used to run from April to June, now it runs, it's actually active now.
What's Friday evening?
Runs from January to eight, Fridays would be good, maybe even Thursday evenings. I'm not opposed to a, a, a weekend, uh, work session.
Could you?
And or, is there any way of possibly conferencing?
Yeah, I, I think you could, we can conference on a work session.
I wouldn't have a problem conferencing.
We can always do that because you don't have to, uh, do that seven days prior, do you, cause it's not a formal meeting? Don't announce that, do you?
That's correct, you're correct.
Okay, yeah, we could always do that, but I think maybe look, maybe the next three Thursday nights, may do a poll.
Okay. Sarah, a time that you prefer to start?
Usually anytime after six works, um, but I mean, if earlier is fine. As long as I know, as long as for any of us no head on, we can make any type of plans we need.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
And one more thing, I just, um, I thought DPW did a great job containing this ice that we had going through this weekend. I mean, I know we didn't get hit nearly as hard as it was anticipated, but, you know, we did get some weather and they were out all night. And, um, you know, I was just impressed that they, um, people always complain about them blowing by at a million miles an hour. Um, I was out and about quite a bit and I didn't, you know, really experience, um, that anything that I felt was unsafe. And I did get two comments from people that they were impressed with. DPW's cleaning up and cared during the course of the storm, so I just thought that that should be noted. And that's all I have, I'm done.
Anything?
Nothing here.
I forgot, Dan has nothing.
And, and that brings us to, uh, citizen participation. Uh, if anyone would like to address council, please come down to the microphone and you have two minutes. Is there any, anyone? Don't be shy, anybody? Um, uh, there's, um, there's, uh, no longer a need for an executive session. So, uh, at this time, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?